Give us the lowdown here.
Good evening, everyone. The purpose of this meeting is a requirement and special condition for our Waste Row Department's MPDS permit. As a component in our MPDS permit, it talks about creating a pollution prevention plan. As part of the pollution prevention plan, we're required to have an annual open forum meeting to give residents an opportunity to discuss any issues or concerns they have with the plan. And the plan was unstated in 2022, and it hasn't changed since then. It's still running the same plan. So it's just a chance if anyone has any comments or concerns.
Any calls out to the plant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Plan is in your packet, and it is also available in the online agenda.
Apparently, we have no questions from the council and no questions from the public, so thank you, Jake.
All right.
We'll conclude the meeting. And now, we will go back to call to order and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Barr?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Echov?
Here.
Callis?
Lee?
Here.
Howser?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Cranford?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Thank you. Being the first meeting of the month, we have need for a Civic Center Authority meeting with no business before the Civic Center Authority. We will close that meeting and move into our regular council meeting. And again, we have three items on the consent agenda. If we've had a chance to peruse those.
Motion acceptance of the consent agenda.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Scott. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, we have additional fees, south side sewer separation at Farnsworth. I believe Brian is going to give us some insight on this.
The letter here in your packet outlines the additional services at the Farnsworth Group as worked on for our sewer separation project. During that project, we investigated a bunch of existing utilities, and there was numerous conflicts with those utilities that could not be avoided. So some had to be moved, some redesign was done on the sewer itself. In the end of all the work that was done, even though there's additional work here, we found that the construction would have incurred considerable additional expenses due to high water tables and some other factors with the ground. So we felt it was prudent and necessary to go ahead and do these redesigns after the utilities were found. And this is a summary of those changes that Farnsworth had for that work.
All this has already been done?
It has been, yeah. We knew it was coming, but Farnsworth, I'm not sure what their delay was, but had not given the formal thing until just recently.
So we just need a motion to accept the agreed upon, or I will motion.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jerry. Roll call, please.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Brian, you're still up. Yes. During our routine bridge inspections, the Mill Street Bridge had a few items that needed attention and maintenance. And we've been working with the Farnsworth Group to create a proposal here for those items. One of the items is that the surface, the asphalt surface on top of the bridge, is really approached kind of its useful life. So for our proposed HMA overlay, we would like to make that part of that program. However, because it is a bridge, it's not as simple as just removing the asphalt and placing more down. There needs to be a load rating done on the structure to make sure that it has sufficient capacity for the operations that will happen on the bridge. So that is included in this proposal, and that is item number one here. The remaining items are to do the structural analysis, detailing, and plan work for the expansion joint replacements. I'm sure all of you have gone over the bridge enough, and you know that that sidewalk is displaced due to the basically failure of that expansion joint, and that our snowplows hit the other expansion joint because they're offset right now as well. So that maintenance is something that needs to be done. In addition to those aesthetic things almost, there is some water infiltration which is causing rust on the end of the beams beneath, and that needs to be addressed so that water infiltration can be stopped. If it's not, obviously, the continued rust can deteriorate those beams and cause greater structural issues. So the proposal here is for that work, for the structural engineering of that, and would recommend approval of that so we can proceed and get that approved through the state so we can get this work done in the upcoming construction season.
Is the inspection of the beam in part of this too, to make sure it's actually going to be viable?
So they will take a look at those beams. We looked at those. It'll be two years coming up in June was the last time that we had an inspection on those. We did see some rust beginning. One of the recommendations in, and I don't remember what the timeframe was, but it's within a number of years that they recommend we get a snooper truck underneath. We can get one from IDOT and get a closer look. We got up there with ladders and did some looking last time, but some repainting of those end beams, end of the beams. And then we'll have to look at the rocker bearings also to see involved with this, but we may likely have to do some additional as well.
Where will those funds come from, Jim?
What's that?
Where would the funds come from after?
So, yeah, this was part of our capital plan, and this is a TIPS one.
Right. I move to approve Mill Street Bridge project.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Barr, seconded by John Willie. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we need a resolution so we can give Jim some opportunity here.
Yes.
Want to light this out for us?
Yes, so early March is when the bid will take place for the electrical contracts. If you remember, we have an agreement with NYMAC in that they each year have an auction for electrical services, and we have the ability to join into this bid for either one, two, or three years depending on what the rates look like. This one that's coming up is for street lighting and for city facilities. This is not the aggregation for the community. And just giving some other information and talking with NYMAC, what they're hearing is that there's a spike coming from ComEd around 15% in June. However, the delivery fees are expected to kind of offset that by 5%, but to expect about a 10% increase overall in energy costs. So this authorization would give me the ability, so I should back up. When the bid happens, we have till 4:00 PM that day to enter into a contract with one of these, whoever wins the bid. So this would authorize me to go ahead and enter into that bid on behalf of the city. And so we'll get those bids in, we'll take a look. And there's a group call with all the communities involved, and NYMAC will go over all of the bids and discuss what they're projecting and give their opinions on whether you should do a one, two, or a three-year bid. And the last time we entered in on this one, we entered, we didn't do three years. I think we did one year. The aggregation has been three years.
Okay. Rates change, obviously, so.
I think it's guaranteed we're going to get some significant rate increases.
With NYMAC, we've come out ahead always, so we've either been at the rate of ComEd. So they won't, they're not going to bid, have a bid that eventually we're paying more than ComEd. It will usually be, here's the rate, or ComEd's rate, and they'll match it if it comes down to that.
So it's a kind of a win-win for us.
Right.
Do you need a motion to give Jim the power?
Yes.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Scott. Roll call, please.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, we have professional service contract. That would be you two.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
So this one is checking an IDOT Aeronautics box. In our meetings with IDOT, we have the entry road project coming up, and one of the added alternates to that road was to replace the pavements around the tee hanger, the west tee hanger. If you've been out there, you know, the east tee hanger where all the planes are stored, around it is all asphalt or concrete. And the one to the west, it has approaches, and there's grass in between. And what's been happening is that it's settling, and some of the planes are having a hard time getting in because there's a big lift to them to getting in, and there's low spots. So as one of the added alternates that came under budget when we bid this entry road was this tee hanger pavement, IDOT said that our consultant agreement, our retainer with Crawford, Millie, Murphy, and Tilly, didn't cover adequately the tee hanger pavement. And so we asked them to reconsider based on the fact that our retainer does have similar projects in it, the taxi lane project that's coming as well. Ultimately, IDOT Aeronautics said, yes, we agree with that. We just need you to then amend your retainer with CMT, and that's what this ordinance will do, is amend our retainer, specifically just adding in, reconstruct the tee hanger pavement as number 11 on our project list. And so that will satisfy IDOT, and it puts us able to, it needed to get done quickly so we could use these 2020 funds before they expire. There'll be one more probably coming, another amendment coming regarding another quick use of funds, but that one, we're still talking with IDOT about.
This whole project's supposed to end in this year?
So this, in this part of the airport improvement program in our last TIPS meeting, yeah, the entry road and this tee hanger are supposed to be fiscal year '26 for the state projects. So it should be happening this, for us this year, '25.
Okay. Any questions?
A motion acceptance of the amendment.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jerry. Roll call, please.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Thank you. Housing study update. Kelly?
We have, our monthly meeting is tomorrow. We're going to discuss the parameters and local match ingredients of any potential grant that we are able to do for homeowners. So we're going to, that's what our main force of discussion is tomorrow. I went out today and worked on some of the housing stock survey. Hopefully, others in the volunteers are out doing, but that's ongoing. That's it, pretty much, right now.
Okay. How much of that study you think is?
I would guess that maybe 20% is completed, just based on the dots that are left on the maps on the phone. But I haven't talked, other than Scott and Mike, I haven't talked, well, Ed and Joni, I know they were out over the weekend because they texted me while they were out doing some stuff. They're doing a big part of it, but the other volunteers we have going, I haven't talked to. So we're hoping everybody's done by March 1st is our goal.
That's the deadline, basically.
Well, we don't have, I mean, we set that as our goal for a deadline, but we don't, if we don't make it, we're not, you know, we're not going to get in trouble.
We're not locked into it or anything.
Yeah. Amy's not going to be mad at us. She'll just be mad at ourselves.
All right. But after tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll see if anybody has any more, and, yeah.
You'll get input from Lori and the other committee people.
Yeah, they're not, Lori's not, she's not doing, most of our volunteers aren't people that will be here at the meeting tomorrow. They're just community members who expressed interest in coming, so tomorrow's group.
We want to make sure we tie into, that's why she's there, is for the county.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. She was here at our last meeting, and I don't know that she's coming tomorrow, but she had a lot of good stuff at our last meeting. She was, yeah.
Well, we want to, we work together well.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right. Anything else there? Okay. Moving on, mayor's comments. Oh, boy. First comment is, let's not forget about the library. They're having a big month, actually a month and a half of activities. The Underground Railroad exhibit and various speakers coming in, presentations. So whenever we have an opportunity to advance the program, we need to do that. John Willie is on the board there, and anything you'd like to put into that, John?
No, I think it's an excellent program. We've got tomorrow night, an impersonator of a conductor on the railroad, and then following, Tramely from the Historical Society is going to talk about a Underground Railroad route that went through eastern part of Livingston County up toward Ottawa. And then, end of the month, the entertainer Chris Fileo, you'll have a meet and greet of the library at 1:00 to 3:00, and at 3:00 o'clock, you'll have a performance, and what he'll incorporate is songs he's written about the Underground Railroad and the issues involved in that. And then there are a few, at least one, I love, the junior high, bringing all the junior high in at various times, not all one time. On the 28th of February, or 28th of March. There should, there could be others, but they haven't responded yet.
Does the presentation have names of families in Livingston County that helped?
He probably does. I haven't read his book, but he probably does. Yes, ma'am.
Well, since it's been publicized, I've gotten several phone calls on it, and there's a lot of excitement, a lot of people looking forward to it. And with the variety of activities through the entire month, it should be one of these things that we should all try to stop in and, you know, get a little view for ourselves. Okay. Something else I want to talk about was Bill Callis. You may have heard that he had another accident at his house, and he was in the hospital for several days, and he broke a bone underneath his knee, and he's going to be having a tough time. So if we have the opportunity to call and talk to Bill, probably would be a good thing to do. He expressed his sorrow for not being available to us, as he's been for almost 40 years. So, but I'd like, you know, everybody to keep that in mind if you have a minute or two, give him a little boost.
No?
Other than that, most of the calls I've been getting have been, gosh, the weather's nice, but, you know, now that the weather's turned nice, why aren't we doing more? And I said, well, it's not that nice, my main response, but we will be. And today, I had somebody come in and jump me about our tax rate and whatnot, and they said, you know, that we promised to be doing streets. Well, we are doing streets, but we have to do them at the time when we can do streets. And I told them that in the future, this year, next year, our capacity because of the tax increase will almost double. So if we could do 10 blocks this year, next year, we'll be doing 20 blocks if the tax goes through and everything stays as projected. So that's been my answer to folks, you know, but it's done when we can do it. We can't drop everything and go to this spot or that spot. So other than that, I think business has been good for the city, and I think, you know, mostly positive comments on everything else that's going on. So, city council comments.
Have that rescheduled meeting that Greg Knowles, the meeting with Greg and the LLACC tomorrow? They're going to look at the Gilded Arts, bug the Gilded Arts, take a look and see what that project will entail. So I'll know more tomorrow night at the Housing Committee, give a little update on how that meeting.
Okay.
I've heard some positive comments from business owners uptown, that they said that January was a very good January, even better than prior to Christmas as far as sales, and this was like three shop orders. So on the positive side, we got that. Wanted to share that.
John Willie?
I know we've got a lot of birds over in the park. If we experienced any unusual deaths of birds, I'm thinking of bird flu over there.
Nothing I've heard of.
Okay, good. Just anybody asks.
Livingston County Health Department would know if it was.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. They'd know it, because they're always watching.
Yeah. Don't forget, February 25th, consolidated primary.
Yep.
And they have changed people's voting places, so pay attention to that. 1, 3, 4, 6, 8, something like that was at the old courthouse now, until the next election, then it goes back to the regular places.
Yeah, well, we need to get on our webpage, explain that even more. I know the county put it out, it was in our newsletter, and it's on Facebook pages.
Everybody got postcard, or I got postcard today.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah. City administrator?
Just a couple, just a couple of quick comments. One being about the 1% sales tax. I know I have fielded a couple of calls about that as well from some businesses, and today's St. Age is one of those things that makes it hard. We put out the information in the newsletter, we put it on our website, and all businesses should have gotten a letter from, in My Tax Illinois advising them that Pontiac sales tax is now 8.25%. And, I mean, they're just, there's no other mechanism, there's no one that will go door to door saying, hey, don't forget to raise your sales tax. But if a business is out there that is hearing it and hasn't done it, make sure you do it because you ultimately are going to be responsible for that. So just a reminder on that, and that has been one of the, you know, the downsides to so many different media types, that not everybody looks at them all. We have the, just, I mentioned the airport projects, what's also probably coming is a request for qualifications for, we had on our project list, crack sealing the runway, and IDOT has decided, and with CMT, our consultant, that the better plan is to rehabilitate that runway, to mill and overlay it. And so that is not included in our retainer, so we'll have to seek requests for qualifications from a consultant for that. So that will be something coming up. And otherwise, you know, tomorrow and the next, tomorrow night, the next day, we're expected to have some ice, and just as a public notice and a warning to prepare for that, to be ready with ice that accumulates on power lines, to be cautious of where you're parking, so the street department can get things salted and prepared, and to give extra time for any emergency services that might be responding to events.
Well, we do have need for executive session for personnel matters, but right now, we have public comments. Any comments from the public? It's nice seeing you here. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have any updates on budget meetings?
Not yet. I will have them very soon. I am really looking probably, hopefully, the last week of February to have our committee meetings.
To near the hole, yes.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll need a motion to go to executive session. Jason and Mike, roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Give us about three to five minutes, and we'll be in executive session.